Right.
Well, I know of a city.
No.
It's out of order.
Okay.
You'll see.
Yeah.
Now.
Right.
If you're just interested.
Uh huh.
You want to notice how good the town is.
Uh huh. Okay. Hmm. Interesting.
Okay, it's 6:01 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's Thursday, October 19th for the Huntley School Board Regular Meeting with closed session. Let's start with roll call.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Drizell. Mr. Guerin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we will continue on. We're going to go a little bit out of order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
So, Mr. Idings is not able to be here this evening, but we do have some friends from Leggie Elementary, so you guys are going to have to help me introduce yourselves. Can you guys do that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, come on up.
Come on up.
Okay, so what I want you guys to do is we're going to give our names and what grade we're in. And then once everybody does that, we're going to read the pledge. Okay.
Brayden, I'm in first grade.
Jackson, I am first grade.
Jack and I am in second grade.
Brayden, I am in fourth grade.
Victoria, I'm in second.
Mia, I am in fourth grade.
Did we get everyone, or did we miss somebody?
Nope, we got all of it.
Okay.
Can you guys make up?
Let's please stand.
Everybody come on over here. Once we jump guys, you guys are going to start us out, okay? Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where liberty stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, before we go, I want you guys to help me introduce another special guest. Can you guys look over by that door? Do you recognize that lady? Who's that? Do you know who? Do you know her job? Mrs. Heppold, and who is Mrs. Heppold?
This is the principal.
Do you want to come on up?
Yes.
So, she knew the meeting started at seven, but we called her and she rushed right on over. Is there anything before we let them go on up and sit in the big important chairs that you wanted to say about our friends today?
Um...
How were they selected?
They were selected because they put their ticket in the raffle at our fun night at Culvers.
Very cool.
So, they were our raffle winners.
Very, very good.
Yeah.
All right, now, boys and girls, did you see those big comfy chairs up there? Do you want to go sit in those chairs? And we can ask you, the board's going to ask you guys some questions.
You guys get to run the meeting for a minute, so come on up.
Yeah.
Hey, 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 I'm going to be the board. Okay. Now, these microphones with the green lights on.
You're not getting out of that.
Then you can speak into it. You don't have to yell as if you can just speak into it and then people will hear what you're going to say. So, just pick a chair and have a seat. Yeah, you guys can go right on up and take a picture. Yeah, go on up. It's the paparazzi part of it. Ready?
Smile.
All right, smile. Laugh. Okay. Can I? Am I missing somebody over there, or no? Okay, good. Well, thanks for leading us in the pledge, guys. You guys did a great job. And since your assistant principal said that you guys did this at Culvers at a fundraiser night, how long ago was that fundraiser, do you remember? A month ago or so? Okay. I'm going to try and quiz you. I'm going to go down the line. I want to know, if you were at Culvers at the fundraiser night, what did you order that night? What did you have? Start with you.
Um...
Yeah, what do you, what do you, what do you, what's your?
Chicken nuggets with fries.
Okay.
I like chicken nuggets with fries, too.
Okay.
Um, I like corn dogs.
Wow. I didn't know they had those there.
Cheeseburger.
All right.
Cheeseburger.
Corn dog with fries.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. So, uh, let's see. What have you guys been doing in school that's been the funnest thing that you've done so far? The most fun thing that you've done?
Um, when we worked on a frogs active, uh, frogs activity.
Frogs? Wow. Neat. Yeah.
Making ice cream.
Making ice cream? Oh, you can get a job at Culvers if you can do that, so. Who else? What other projects? Yes.
Um, science.
Science. Awesome. Okay. Well, that's, that's terrific. Now, you guys heard that there's a baseball game tonight, right? Did you guys? Yeah? Anybody cheering for the Cubs tonight? Okay. This would be a much better question if our president was here, because he's a huge White Sox fan, so. Okay. Well, I want to thank you guys for coming up and helping us out today. And enjoy the rest of the year. And thanks a lot. Okay? All right.
Good job.
Stay here, guys.
You need to stand up.
You need to stand up, so we can see you guys. We're going to take a picture of all of yous, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you guys come around, come around to the front and stand right, right in front of us, and then we'll take some pictures with you.
Yeah, that's real funny.
Can you see the guys behind me?
Yes.
Okay.
If you like chicken nuggets, you're on this. Okay, now we got to get the. We got in this nice camera and that's what we can take.
That's really funny. Oh, somebody hit the.
Oh, mood lighting. All right. Thanks again, guys. Thank you. Is that mood lighting with Bruce Willis? Oh, moonlighting. And what did you order? I knocked on your door. Oh, you can, was there a catch? Yeah.
I asked, I asked if we got separated, if, if Mark and I were separated for talking too much.
They came for the pledge. All right, with that, we'll continue on with the agenda, going back to item number two. I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items as listed in the agenda. Okay. Okay, a second for Mr. Troy. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Drizell. Mr. Fleck.
Yes. Okay, we are in closed session at 6:10 PM.
Oh, they're right here.
It's yes, it's closed session, so we'll start back up at seven.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah. Um. It's yes, it's closed session, so we'll start back up at seven.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And can we actually make?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, wow.
No, definitely.
If you want to call them all night, John, and Chris, that's fine.
That's what I think, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
But then I will go by the end of this, but. That's not what it says. Uh, I don't know.
No, I haven't, I haven't. Is that new? Oh, see, I, I have one email tomorrow. Uh, on the personnel, on the specialized stuff, there's nothing coming out of here. They're not even in there.
Oh, Debbie was going to a meeting, she was going to ask, that's why I was asking.
Oh, and I don't think.
She said she was going to ask.
Yeah, but I don't, the meeting, um, we went to, if it was meeting, I think, or she was going to have like two or three hundred people in it, and it was all upset, I was like, I'm just going to leave about fifteen, and it was not. There was nobody coming through there, and they cut all the, they cut a line of questions out, and there are so many unanswered questions, and they didn't give, and they queued, and providing answers to most of these questions, um.
To provide answers, okay.
Well, you can call everybody, or I can just make, I think I'm just going to call that stuff, or, uh, uh, somebody in the meeting, because I don't think it matters first thing, I think it's the way it is.
It does, right, but they might know.
They, yeah. They might know, when I talk to other she-efos, they're like, where, what do they have in their face, or no, was there no need for that, we're not.
So, and then my other question then was the other part of that, is what date did that E formula start with, or what, yes, why, we heard, you say, put any of this, why, um, information for staff, or do you have a team, and it says, you heard, do you need to put in first staff, and others just say, no, because that formula is going back retro, so that time, so it don't matter.
That's my understanding, it's going back retro, and it's based on the minimum, they're going to pay, they're going to pay.
We're not going, we're not going to put in staff attendants.
No, so, like, for instance, the question is, when I called that that stuff, um, or, I can't remember the other guy, he came down there, um, my questions are going to be, now, salaries, but, what, population, high star, for vendors, for, for nurses, for people that we normally would, for personal re-employment, do we, because there's no need, population, there's only.
There will be, for, for those kids, like, well, we have access to part, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, correct, but, but we got nurses in there, we got, we got certified staff, and orsens in there.
No, look, that's all of our staff stuff, that's what, that, that's what that UFL was going to be getting into doing, and the other one was, we were getting ready to enter in half, and we didn't want to get, put the answer on the yes, right, so, I don't want to lose that on the first one, but you're getting the dates going back, so they're all going back, and.
We're already receiving, for the current year, we're receiving exactly what we're receiving, E S Y, personal re-employment, the all children, all shoulders, and then obviously general state.
Okay, so we will not go in and do that.
That's my understanding, but, again, I don't, I don't know, um, if they think, if it's.
The only reason, stay out the time of what in it.
Yeah, because I would hate to find out. Do they need that system at all to mow, I don't know how that's being involved, or is it all, or is mow your space kind of function now, just sort of a general, like, I don't know that.
I don't.
I think it's general, do they? You know, I'll ask Debbie in time, that's my next question, because I think it's general, which is, you know, it's like, or.
Now, I'll follow up, like, for everything in this system, for our, out of the strict, like, if we have tuition in, is in there, so that, um, Debbie, talk, I don't know, whatever it needs to be to create those.
Correct.
We want to create, we're getting that for girl, we had all that.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
But you're talking about creating tuition, right? We need all the costs, and, and, yes, the salary is.
No, that's a whole different piece of, but while we're, that keeps coming up, because I just, I asked Debbie some a little while ago, about, Debbie said, you, you guys are going to go, and we have to hang, and she, and she brought up, that question, well, I want to bite this out of my question, so that she said, okay, so we have that salary, and, for those, anyway.
Yeah.
For those.
Right, for the comp.
Yeah.
So, are we, can we, can we, uh, we're.
What's that?
No. Which, uh, for, you can't, um. You're not. How are we? I find it so.
We never got it.
No, I know.
He's, he told me, he said, no, they're not, and I, and he said, he's.
Well, one of my topics was, it was, it was just.
Is there a monitor?
How are you?
One more? Okay, you want me to speak?
Yes, I, well.
I like my voice.
How are you?
Thank you, dear. Uh. 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 Uh.
I think Kirsten's going to be here tomorrow.
I think Kirsten is gonna be here tomorrow.
I think Kirsten is gonna be here tomorrow.
Okay, it is 7:07. We're going to go back into public session. Let's have roll call.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Drizell? Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, we still have our quorum. So, we've already done the pledge of allegiance. We'll move on to public comment as per policy 2-230. Do we have any public comment? Okay. It is our policy to limit public comment to three minutes per speaker. Want to just get that out there? And our first is Mr. Alan Scott.
Good evening. Yeah, I was looking through your agenda packet today and I was reviewing the policies and the policy changes. And the one that struck me was the controversial policy where if there's going to be a topic that's going to be discussed, what you do includes things like Dr. Berkey has got to okay everything. But as I was looking through it, I was kind of drawn to the definition of controversial, which is emotional. There's some, there's some different areas that people get excited about. And yet, they said within the policy, it says, "We try to get away from any emotional criticism and hurtful sarcasm has to be avoided." I guess my big question is, who's monitoring this? If the superintendent okay's something to be done and the superintendent is in charge, who's going to be monitoring this and making decisions about what that speaker has? And also making decisions about what sort of emotional effect it has on the various people? Maybe you've seen some of the Berkeley riots that they've had where speakers come in, and that's not just Berkeley. It's many colleges throughout the United States. They don't want to hear anything that doesn't go along with what their belief system is, and they get very emotional about it. How are, with this policy, it seems somewhat vague, and I was wondering how that's going to be managed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you very much. Any other public, public comment? All right, there being none, we'll move on to number six, revision and adoption of the agenda. I am not very good at this, so please help me through this, however Mr. Drizell does this. Is there a superintendent's report, assistant, I'm sorry, associate superintendent's report? Mr. Howard's not here. So, how about Ms. Lombard?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Schlifter?
No.
Okay. Mr. Altmeier? Okay, very good. And Mr. Azir?
No update.
Okay. Okay. And so, that being said, I would make a motion to revise the agenda with the removal of numbers seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 13. Second? Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. With that, we move on down to number 12, 12.1 FOIA requests. See those? Any questions or comments on those? All right. That was easy. Hope the rest of the meeting goes that well. Mr. Drizell isn't here either. I should have removed number 14 also. There's no president's report. So now that moves on to item 15, which is the consent, consent items that are listed in the agenda. I will make a motion to approve all the items listed in the consent agenda under number 15. Second. Okay, and a second made by Mr. Troy, and this is a roll call.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Drizell? Mr. Garin? Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. Very good. I forgot to remove any items. There were no items to be removed, I guess, from the consent agenda. I'll get this right someday. All right. Action items, number 17. Let's start with 17.1 supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable. Sir Altmeier, is there anything you want to point out for that?
Nothing to point out. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Then I will make a motion to approve item 17.1, the supplemental purchase orders in the amount of $176,920.16. Supplemental accounts payable report at $1,148.69. Second by Mr. Troy. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, and let's do a roll call.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Drizell? Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. And now on to number 17.2, which is the fiscal year 2017 audit and the annual financial report. Mr. Altmeier?
Thank you very much. In front of you, I have placed the annual financial report, the audit as of June 30th, 2017. We do have our auditors. We have our partner here, Mr. Chris Skollet from Evans Marshall &amp; Peace. I'll ask him to come up here in a second to present the annual financial report and the audit as of June 30th, 2017. But, you know, let me just start with, you know, first, you know, our annual thank you to Debbie and the fiscal team, the whole team. Did a great job this year, which, which I'm sure Mr. Skollet will echo. But FY '17 was a very successful year, not only in the classrooms, but certainly from a financial point of view, tracking within budget. At a very high level, operating revenues were $97.4 million. Operating expenses came in at $96.9 million with a $467,000 operating surplus versus a budget of $234,000. With the other financing sources, the operating surplus, as noted, within the budget in the AFR, came in at $1.1 million. Here to present a little more on the details behind the audited financials is Mr. Chris Skollet.
Make sure that green light's on.
I got it. I screwed that up last time. Before I begin with the summary of the audit, I'd like to thank Mark and Debbie and the entire financial staff for their hard work and dedication for being and staying fiscally responsible. It always makes my job easier when my clients care as much for the audit as I do. This year, we completed the audit in a timely and efficient manner. I did not run into any problems or issues. Reporting and controls were sound, as this is my expectation when I come to this district. As I've said in the past, and will say it again, this is the most organized and managed financial department I audit on an annual basis. And that's about over 30 schools that my firm audits. Fiscal year 1617 was a really good year for this district, implementing new innovative programs and remaining under budget. Over the last six years, the district, the district has increased its operating fund balance from $24.3 million in fiscal year 2011 to $36.7 million at the end of fiscal year 17, resulting significantly improved cash flow. The district is committed to providing the best value to the community while continuing to maintain a low operating cost per pupil. Currently, the district's operating cost per pupil approximated $9,832, approximately 24% below fiscal year 26 state average of $12,973. Some financial highlights for fiscal year 17. The district finished the year with an operating surplus of $1.1 million, like Mr. Altmeier previously said. Fiscal year 17 surplus was primarily driven by favorability in salaries and benefits. And as everyone knows, state's current economic climate is, is, is kind of bad right now. The district is continuing to deliver dynamic educational experience for other students while still continuing, continuing to operate efficiently and meeting the needs for the district. And for the financial rating, the district's financial profile rating is recognition, which is the highest recognition under ISB. The district's rating has steadily improved over the last five years. And I think that's pretty much it. Now, obviously, take some questions if anyone has some without it.
Any questions from the board? Comments?
Just from your own point of view, is there any area you'd point out as maybe an area of opportunity for improvement within the district?
You know, like I said earlier, I feel like this district does everything possible to maintain fiscal responsibility. I've never ran into any problems here. The expectation, I do come here, is high, and I do remain skeptical, but there's nothing that I would change in the district.
Okay. Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Well, with that...
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So, I appreciate, appreciate you coming, appreciate you coming tonight. You know, every time when the audit gets going, you know, and I, you know, I come down, you know, at some point and visit. You're downstairs, used to be upstairs, but now you're down in the, you're down in the bunker. And I go down there, and I have to admit, it was, it was always more interesting when Mr. Thurman was here. But, not that I don't enjoy talking to you, but I always enjoyed catching up with Mr. Thurman. Always enjoyed catching up with him once a year.
So did I.
But...
He's moving to Tennessee.
But no, I come, I come down and, you know, and go down, you know, and ask those questions without Mark there, you know, just to make sure, you know, are you getting everything you need and the answer, you know, this year was just like it is in previous years. Like, oh, my gosh, this, everything's ready for us when we get here. And, you know, there are going to be, as they spot check things, things they go up and ask for, and they always get them. And so, I really appreciate, you know, the fact that our fiscal department, you know, does have everything so well organized, because there's obviously a lot that you do go through in a couple of, of days. But Debbie, Debbie works a lot with it. Thank you, Debbie. And Mark, of course, works with it. And thank, thanks to both of you, because I think it should make us proud that out of the 30 districts you do, that we, we, we have our financial act together, which means we're being very, you know, fiscally responsible to taxpayers. But again, that's part of why we're able to do everything that we do. We've managed our money so well that we, you know, are able to keep increasing programs every year. We're able to, you know, you know, to do quite a few things. And I think that came out, out of many years of hard, hard work. So, we just need to continue that hard work and, and things will be good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate that on behalf of the board, thank you very much. And thank you to your department, Mr. Altmeier, for doing such a great job. It makes our job a lot easier when we're trying to figure out how best to spend the resources that are available. So, thank you very much, and thanks for the kind words about how they're doing. Appreciate it. Okay. With that, I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year 17 audit and annual financial report. I'll second. A second from Mr. Troy. Any discussion on that? Okay. Then let's take a roll call of that.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Drizell? Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, that motion carries. Very good. Onto item number 18. Do we have any new public comment as per policy number 2-230? There being none, then at 7:21, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting, or second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I adjourn?